Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 12th, 2020 regular meeting of the Planning Board. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2020 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, and posted on the bulletin board here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chirrelli and Kevin Delcor are absent. Mr. Scoville?
Present.
Peason?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Hestag?
Here.
Senator Amida?
Here.
Hammick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lepani?
Here.
Mr. Julien?
Here.
Here's Roger.
First up, we have considerations of meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 13th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, just note that Mr. Lepani cannot vote on those minutes. Everyone else can.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
I did notice a correction. It says 2019. Should it be 20? It says the notice of the 2019 annual should be 20. Minor snip.
Was it last year?
Well, it's for a teller. Oh, that's interesting. I have a version that must have been corrected.
Okay.
Never mind.
I'm just glad that someone read them.
I passed the test.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. What's that correction?
No, I have a version that has 2019 on it. Nate has one that has 20. It's okay.
Incorrect.
I'll make the motion.
And we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any additional comments from the dais, from the floor? Seen on, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Senator Amida?
Yes.
Mr. Hammick?
Yes.
Mr. Julien?
Yes.
Mr. Roger?
Yes. Next up, consideration of meeting minutes, October 10th, 2019. I have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, just a note again, yourself is excluded, Mr. Peason, Mr. Hestag.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the dais? Floor, seen on, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Senator Amida?
Yes.
Mr. Hammick?
I understand.
Deputy Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Julien?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any resolutions. Nope, no board business. So next is business from the floor. So if anyone from the public would like to address the Planning Board for any items that are not on this evening's agenda, please come forward. No one's racing to the front. So we will move on to considerations of ordinances. Ordinance 2020-08, it's ordinance to amend various sections of our zoning ordinance, including the addition of an R8A zone that applies to the blocks and lots that are stated. So, Mr. Raski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance basically rezones what is known as the Glengarry Quarry or the former quarry. Currently, it's zoned M for mining, and a parcel, a portion of it is also zoned in the Corporate Development Zone, the CDZ zone. The rezoning would apply to lots 9, 1101, and 4601 in Block 182, which are shown upon the shelf on the map on the left. There's also another property, Lot 3802 in Block 183, which is on the right side. It's actually adjoins the main quarry. It's not separate, it's just on two separate tax map. But this lot actually fits right in down here. So what you have is Falcon Road at the top, Hamilton at the bottom, the railroad cutting through, Sunnymead on the right-hand side. This lot would be on the other hand of Sunnymead. This parcel to the right of the subject lot is the Royce Brook Golf Course, to give you some orientation. The Promenade Shopping Center is up to the left here, and the township-owned Open Space Park is right here. This rezoning, it is part of the affordable housing process, and it would change the quarry in its entirety from mining and CDZ to a new zone entitled Residential 8A. Basically, it's a single-family zone. It would permit the construction of up to 380 single-family homes on 8,000-square-foot lots. It would include an affordable housing obligation of 88 units, which would not be constructed here. They would constitute, basically, Phase 2 of the Sherman project. So they would be constructed off-site. And that agreement is in keeping with a court-sanctioned settlement that was recently reached with M&amp;M Realty Partners. So just a quick overview of what the zone would entail. The unit types would be detached, single-family homes. Again, the minimum lot size would be 8,000 square feet, which is the same as the R2 zone in the township. Front yards of 20 feet, side yards 15, rear yards 20, lot widths of 80 feet, impervious surface maximums of 30 percent, and a 35-foot, two-and-a-half-story maximum on the height. So it is simply a straight, single-family zone. Obviously, there are a number of constraints on the property, which if and when the developer came forward with an actual subdivision plan, all that would have to be shown on the plan and accounted for. They would obviously be subject to the usual DEP and DRCC permits in terms of wetlands, floodplains, et cetera. So that's it in a nutshell. If the board members have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the dais?
I have a question.
Okay.
The lot at 38.02, is that added for the density?
The...
The one that's on the right-hand?
They own, it's just part of the quarry property.
Yeah.
It wasn't added. It just, that's, just happens to be on the other side of Sunnymead.
Right.
But it is part of their property.
Okay.
But that's part of the Sherman project? Is that what you said?
No, the affordable housing obligation that would be attached to this zone would be satisfied off-site. So it wouldn't be built on this property. It's, right now, the idea is that it would be built, if you recall, the Sherman project had two phases to it. RPM development was before this board some time ago, and we got a site plan approved to build the first 88 units on Phase 1. Phase 2 would be, 88 units would be built by this entity or some other entity that they would contract with.
Any additional comments, questions? Just to know that this is just part of the normal planning process or zoning ordinance approval process. It was introduced by the Township Committee last month. It comes to us for our review and comment. We don't actually pass anything. We just make recommendations moving forward, or recommend for their approval. But we don't formally approve that here. It's just, we push it back, or send it back to the Township Committee.
Consistent with prior township practice with these, I would ask that you at least open it to the public. I'm sure you were going to do that anyway, but just to allow for any comment on this particular...
Yep, of course. So I may have a motion to open to the public.
I'll move.
Chairman, if I could, just one, make one comment before we go. I just wanted to reiterate that in this zoning, that we've only allowed for single-family homes on this as opposed to any density. So obviously, there's no apartments, no townhomes. So that alleviates a lot of the population that could be put on the site at 380 single-family homes as could be substantially larger building and density that we did not want at this time for this project. So I just think that that's a good, a good resolve of this property. Taking it from mining, and if you've been here long enough, some of a brick factory and a large, messy, though they were clean, but a lot of truck traffic, et cetera, that used to go up and down Hamilton Road, 380 single-family homes, I don't think is a detriment to the area at all. That's all I'll say.
Okay. Thank you. So we had a motion and a second. So roll call, please.
You're open to public.
Oh, it's open to public, so. Well, that's why I was going to have a motion to open it to public. So do we need just to do...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So if there's anyone from the public, see our first public, come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
You're here.
And we didn't want to keep it too low, not to disappoint you.
Susan Golliford-Hunt Club Road. I just have two questions. What are the acreage in each of those lots?
The entire tract is 347.52 acres.
That's both of those together?
The entire tract.
Okay. M&amp;M Realty and RPM, are they associated, or did they just agree to this?
They're not associated.
Okay. The cleanup on the Glengarry property, I think it was handled in 2014. Has that, is any, I know you said some of this property would not be able to be built on. That's completely completed as far as this goes, the rezoning?
What's completed?
The, any cleanup or anything that was involved?
I'm, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment on this resolution, or ordinance? Okay. Seen on, may I have a motion to recommend to the Township Committee?
To adopt?
To adopt this ordinance at their next meeting?
As introduced, there's no...
Yep, as, right. As introduced, there's no changes to it.
I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Any more last shot comments? Okay. Seen on, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Senator Amida?
Yes.
Mr. Hammick?
Yes.
Mr. Julien?
Yes.
Mr. Roger?
Yes. Okay. Next up is our application for the evening. Heritage Business Campus, file number 19-PB-18-MSP. It's applicant seeking amended final major site plan approval and waivers to amend approval previously granted under application 03-PB-19-SR. With the resolution date of January 15th of 2004, the applicant is proposing architectural changes, including tenant spaces to accommodate 29 units, where 16 units were previously approved on the property, which is located in the light industrial zone. Counselor Flores.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grohan. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw, Gillespie O'Grohan and Fisher. I'm here before the applicant today, Howe LLC. We're seeking the amended major site plan necessary to construct what was previously approved. It's a 54,000-square-foot flex warehouse. This is a project that was previously approved in 2003. The footprint doesn't change. Much of the stormwater infrastructure has already been installed. This project sat dormant for some, for some time, and we have a new contract purchaser here tonight, who's the applicant, Ron Pagano. And as we were, as he was discussing purchasing the property, he decided to make two substantive changes from the prior approvals. Number one is the makeup of the units, whereas the prior application proposed 16 larger units, and this application proposes 29 units. Again, that's to accommodate the market demands. And while we were, while we're back here, Mr. Pagano has retained Carmen Cerminera, an architect, to provide some additional details and some enhancements to the prior project that he will explain. This is, of course, it's on Royce Field Road, borders the Central Jersey Railroad to the north. No new, no new variances, same footprint, not really much different from, from the site plan that was approved some time ago. There is a C-bol variance necessitated by this application for minimum lot width. Again, that's consistent with the prior approval. There was, there's a minor, about a two-foot discrepancy about, of what was approved back in 2003, and actually what the final plaques were. So, and my engineer will, will discuss that with respect to the site plan. We have requested outside agency waivers for DRCC, SUSDC, NGDAP, because the stormwater improvements were already permitted, installed, inspected by the township. They had done some grading work as part of the prior approvals, prior to the project sitting dormant for the last 15 years, 16 years. With me tonight, I have George Folk, our professional civil engineer, David A. Stires and Associates, and I also have Carmine Cerminera from his architectural firm here in Hillsborough. And unless there are any legal questions, we had submitted notice in accordance with the MLUL, and I would ask that we swear in either all of our witnesses at once, or one at a time.
One at a time.
If you're writing a testimony, you get to make the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Just use your mic.
George H. Folk, F-O-L-K.
And for convenience, Mr. Folk, I did mark your Exhibit A1 and dated it all the way to the right. So you, can you just go up and just, and indicate for the record the last revision date of that plan, and describe the site plan for the board?
It's...
Mr. O'Grohan, before we get into the testimony, we have to just officially designate Mr. Folk.
Sure. Mr. Folk, just to give the board the benefit of your professional licensure, you've appeared before this board and many other municipalities in the past, isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
I would offer this witness as an expert in the field of professional civil engineering.
Okay. Unless anyone has any questions, objections? Okay, we'll accept. Please proceed.
I was the original engineer for this job, 2003, 2004, so.
So you're perfect to tell us what's going on.
You're still here. Just a little older. The rendering of the site plan, it's Sheet 1 of 1. The date of it is February 24th, 2020. Essentially, is the original...
Mr. Folk, just keep the mic up close to your mouth so that people on the TV can hear you.
Okay, sorry. All right. It's the original layout of what was approved in 2004 by this board. It's 54,600 square feet, and the building's L-shaped. North is to the top of the exhibit. West is to the left. East is to the, to the right. There is a residential home here to the south. That residential home has been vacant since the first application. So that is the only residence in the area. There is a dog kennel to the back that I believe the people live there. They used to live there. I'm not sure they still live there, but they run a dog business out of that surrounds the property. To the west and to the north is Landscape Materials, Inc. That's been there for many years. And of course, Royce Field Road is to the east, and across from that is the subdivision, the commercial subdivisions I put in there, the county buildings over there, and the GSA, and the VA, and that, that whole compound to the east. The building is accessed, will be accessed off of Royce Field Road. We do show 88 spaces. The ordinance requires 39. We were just given the whole site years ago flexibility. The site, we considered it could have one tenant, two tenants, or 16 tenants. So it was, the demising walls were, could be wherever someone wanted to rent the building. So this application has gone now to 29 units, but I think Mr. Pagano could tell you, but I think if he could rent it with one tenant, he would probably rent it to one tenant as well. I'm not sure, but I would think that flexibility is there. Again, we show access around the building for fire conditions. The last application we did not consider, or did not anticipate tractor-trailer usage at this site to small units, typically box trucks maybe. Maybe a plumber does his business through, in here, a painter, maybe a handyman, carpenter, something like that. That's the type of business they're looking for, trying to get the people that are in the home, out of the homes, in the residential areas, and into something like this. That was the intent in 2004. I believe that's still the intent, is to get those kind of uses out of the residential, you know, backyards of people's houses, and into something that's more commercialized like this. That's, that's, that's the idea of the, the building. The drainage was done in, say, 2006. The pond was put in, and the piping for the pond and the inlets were put in by Mr. Urbano to the north with the intention of building this building. The economy in 2008, I'd say, went south, and so did the building plans. And so it just sat. What we're looking to do is essentially bring back the, the original project, and the architect has refaced the building, made it look nicer, and added some more units to be more market demand. We have a meeting March 30th at DRCC. I've talked to John Hutchison down there, and he's, you know, wants us to come down, go through the application. I have to, I've done the revised drainage calculations from the old plan. The base still is sized for the new stormwater regs that have come through, but we're going to talk to the DRCC about what additional stormwater quality actions, groundwater recharge, if he wants that. So we're going to go at DRCC, talk with them, tell us how they want to enhance what's already been built in the ground. So as far as stormwater maintenance on the site, we're going to comport with all-state rules as they exist today. Same with the soil erosion. We're going to go, being at that permit, it's a three-and-a-half-year life of that permit. A lot of times, we like to wait till the job is approved, so you have more time on that permit. So we will be filing for that permit as well. The county has issued a letter saying that they approve of, of this project. The NJDEP, initially, back in 2003, we had a isolated wetland pocket in the front of this property, and we achieved the general permit number six to fill those wetlands. When Mr. Urbano brought this building pad up to subgrade, and when he did the underground stormwater improvements, that permit came into effect and then became void, or, you know, the wetlands were disturbed, and then no longer needed the permit. So the pond's in, there's no permits from DEP that require any work for the pond. So the permits that we do require is DRCC and soil conservation, and of course, board approval. Lighting on, on the site is essentially the same lighting that we had proposed 2004. However, we're going to be changing the heads out to LEDs. There is a little bit of light spillage to the north, to the Landscape Material, Inc.'s property. And I've talked to the owner of that property, and he's satisfied that that's not going to be a problem. I believe the owner, the hours of operation aren't going to be all night. The owner, or the potential owner, he can describe the hours of operation best, but the lights will be shut off except for security lighting, and whatever's lighting is required for building occupancy. The landscape, we had a substantial buffer here that we had done in 2004 for this gentleman's house here that was vacant at the time, and has been vacant since that time. So because we're an industrial site next to a residential use, we had this 30-foot-wide buffer. We maintained that buffer for this application. It's pretty substantial, and this would be a non-conforming use if they were to go ahead and reoccupy this home in the IT zone. The variances that we have a slight, the planner, Mr. Gorman pulled out that the width of the property is slightly narrower than it was in 2004 plans, and the site total property area is slightly smaller. What happened at that time that I, that I recall was when our surveyor went to file the plat at the county. There were some changes made with the lot line adjustments, and this one got pinched a little bit for it to fit into everything around it, the way surveyors do things. So that, that essentially is what, what occurred in that situation. If you look at the planner's comments, the previously approved lot width was 218.23 feet. This application is 216.4 feet. So it's a little over a foot difference in width, and I think that's a de minimis situation. The lot depth is, is 966 feet, and then it goes down to 960. So that's a six-foot shift in the back line. That was a part of this filing of the, of the final plat. And essentially, that was the issues there. And then there is a, we have an error on our zoning table where we call out 34 percent for impervious coverage when the original approval in 2004 was 57 percent. That number, instead of 34 percent, should be 55 percent. That was, I don't know what, I apologize. I don't know what happened there. But it's still not, it's not a variance condition because 60 percent is allowed in this zone. And I intend to comply with engineers' comments, planners' comments, the environmental commission's comments, dumpsters on the site. We'd like to, we see the request to discuss dumpsters. Not knowing any tenants, what their use of the site, how many tenants, that kind of thing. If we needed to add another dumpster, being that we have so much parking, I think if the board wouldn't mind, that we would put another dumpster next door to it in the parking lot. Same dumpster, same everything, just one more if we need to get, go to that condition. But I'd like to have that option. And that's, if the board has any questions, that's basically the project.
Mr. Folk, just, thank you very much. You've answered a lot of my questions.
Good.
In my letter. Just the one thing that I think you need to touch on is the utilities.
Okay.
One, are they all going to be underground, I'm assuming?
Yes.
The water line, specifically, I know lately, water companies are requiring those hot boxes.
Yes.
One is not shown on the plans. It looks like we're going to have a substantial side of water, fire service going to the building. So please coordinate. Would the water company, is this required, in case it's on the by-plan?
Sure, certainly will.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
Just a couple of questions. Can you describe what the parking lot would be used for, or if the parking lot would be used for anything other than parking, for outside storage, for instance?
We don't intend to have outside storage.
Okay.
Again, I think the parking lot, initially, we felt that we wanted to give enough movement of vehicles on the parking lot that you don't have, you know, one tenant tripping over another tenant and saying, you know, you're parking in my spot, that kind of a thing.
Okay.
I, without knowing the tenants, I can't really...
Okay, so you, you got basically double the park, amount of parking spaces you need.
We don't need to, we don't need to strike them all. If that, if you want us to leave them on strike, we can do that.
Well, no, I'm talking about excess pavement, for one thing. Well, no, I'm talking about excess pavement, for one thing. You need all that pavement if you don't need all those parking spaces.
Well...
And that's why that kind of precipitated the first question. With all that empty pavement, it might be, you know, someone's going to store something out there that doesn't belong there.
No, I understand. I understand your concern completely.
So if there's any way to actually have the parking reflect a reasonable demand, not saying you have to have exactly the 39, but, you know, rather than doubling it, or you could bank them and have them in some sort of pervious surface temporarily, but it seems like a lot of excess parking is extra pavement, and it also, I think, could lead to outside storage where it's not permitted.
I completely understand your concern. What, I really, I think there's, not knowing how many guy, I think your township ordinance for once is too light on parking.
That's surprising.
I think 39 spaces for this development like this is a little light.
Okay.
Maybe 88 might be a little heavy. There's maybe something in the middle. We kind of envisioned this area here in the center of the L, parking here, say, tractor-trailer does come to the site. We wanted to be able for it to maneuver to get back off the property without really trying to get around, even though a WV50 truck could make these turns out, if, you know, a big box truck or something, he had the ability to turn around and come back out. Every one of these units has a shop door to pull into. You know, if they have a bigger van or a box truck, we wanted to allow enough turning movements. So the size of the parking area, although I agree with you, there's more spaces than we need, I think we still do need the physical size of the asphalt out there for any kind of turning movements.
As long as it's understood, it's for parking and maneuvering only, not for outside?
Right. I get you with the outside storage.
Just getting back to the differences in its various dimensions. So again, just for clarification, it's, for lack of a better term, a surveying error or discrepancy when it was surveyed back when, and then when it was surveyed when it was filed? What caused, besides an earthquake, what caused the differences?
Yes, sir. I can't, I can't, I don't know. I wasn't part of the filing of the map at the time. That was 2003 or 2004. It just so happens, at that time, I had left Donald Steyer's Associates and went on to another company, and that was filed with our old surveyor there, and I really have no idea how...
But the current figures that you show are accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the filed lot.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mr. Falk, I just want to, I just want to clarify the stormwater issue that came up in the discussion in the environmental commission, because on Mr. Gorman's report, it's a little confusing to me here, because he says the applicant is requesting a waiver for the following submission items, community impact statement, and then outside agency submissions to NJDEP, DRCC, SUSDC. You're not requesting waivers for...
No, I'm not, no, absolutely not. I just testified that we will go to DRCC and get their, gain their approval. Some say you can soil conservation, we will gain their approvals. Again, NJDEP, there isn't a permit that we need from them. So that would be the only, not really a waiver, but there isn't a permit that I need.
What about rerunning those stormwater calculations that Dr. Brupka had recommended?
Yes, I did that. Yep, there, we, the basin's fine, it's big enough.
Okay.
What we need to do is provide water quality, groundwater recharge, if DRCC wants that in this zone. It does show that it's not in the metropolitan planning area, so groundwater recharge would be required. So we're going to discuss how that can be accomplished and the water quality measures. As far as the management, stormwater management, quantity, we can cover, that's all taken care of. And the greater, the larger storms now than there were in 2004, the pond will, can address all that as built.
So after that conversation with DRCC, you'll resubmit that to the township?
Oh, yes, yeah. That's part of, I hope to have that part of all the compliance.
And at that point, we could review it again, just to make sure everything's in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Falk, with regards to some drainage questions here, I noticed the topography is normally front to back, though your stormwater drains for the parking lot are in the center of the parking lots. Do you have a convex type of parking lot to bring all the water to the center, to the drains, or how is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is always my question. My second question is, the inlets off the roof, are they directly drained into the water system, or are they draining right to the blacktop at this time?
At this time, they're onto the blacktop.
Onto the blacktop. All right. So I always question the winter time.
Sir.
And plowing of snow and ice. So essentially, most of the professionals here, especially if you have all those nice open parking spots, are going to want to push all that snow up to the curb, and then you're going to have your freeze and thaw cycle, and that's going to drain back down to those center drains by the natural topography of the land that you're proposing. So I don't know if we have some extra parking spots that are available, maybe create some areas where the snowplow can push into a, an area, possibly past the curb with a drain there, so you don't have that freeze and thaw cycle back to the center of the parking lot.
I understand your concern, yeah. We can definitely put signage up or something, work with the, I'm sure the potential owner would hire his contractor and can make sure that that discussion's made.
Yeah, because right now, the only opportunity is to either push it to the curb or all the way down to the end, and around the back to where your detention basin is, which is a long push and can potentially be very difficult and costly. So it might be an easy, since you may have some extra spots available, to create a little, an area for that.
Sure, okay, yeah. We can stripe something out.
Also, with your drains coming down off the roofs, that, again, is going to be moved out towards that natural freeze and thaw cycle up to the center of driveway, so you want to be careful about the slip and fall there. With regards to the buffer on the back and the trees, do they propose to have that irrigated, do you know, or if that's just, or not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so do they have any water issues there? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there was one other clarification that's actually off of Mr. Euro's letter. Your application apparently had asked for a waiver for 18-foot-long spaces, but on the plan, it shows 20 foot, so which is it?
I'm not sure how that got in there.
That's my error.
Uh-huh. So they're 20?
Yes.
No waiver for that. We need the larger spaces for the commercial trucks that we anticipate being the end users.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions from the dais?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I seen the table that the maximum pervious coverage for what was previously approved was 57, but what's proposed is 34?
Right, I mentioned that before. That was an error on my part. It's 55.
Okay. And then dovetailing off of Mr. Maskey's comments regarding the parking, is land bank parking an option if, for the applicant to consider, if it's determined that you don't need to build all 88 spaces?
I think maybe Mr. Pergano, as the operator, could best describe that. As far as testimony goes, you know, again, we want to keep the turning movements into any of these drive-through, drive-in to garages, so that there's cars parked here, and then there's turnaround. I'm sure we could bank some, if you, if, you know, something that's...
It's one of those things you just...
Yeah, I understand, sure.
So you get approval for it, but you don't build it out, so you don't have that amount?
Yeah, maybe the spaces to the north, and to the, in this corner here, the north, and this east here, we could do that.
David, do you work with them at the staff load?
Yeah, I think if the board chose to approve this application, they could make a condition that a alternate parking plan with bank parking be submitted and for the board engineer's approval.
Okay.
So to make sure it still works, obviously, and that the circulation still works.
This way, if we don't need to build all that, that paving.
Sure, yeah.
To benefit, to both parts.
Yeah, sure, yep.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Okay, I have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who would like to question this witness of their testimony, free to come up. Okay, it looks like you're done for now.
Boy, it's a lot better this time than 2004. Members of the board, my final witness is our licensed architect, Carmine Sermonara, from his firm here in Hillsborough. I know he's appeared before this war with me recently, so I would ask him to be accepted under the assumption that your license is still valid in the state of New Jersey.
It is.
Okay, so let's swear you in.
Do you swear anything to the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you state it so I can hear it.
Carmine Sermonara, C-E-R-M-I-N-A-R-A.
And just for the record, I did pre-mark the two architectural exhibits. The color rendering is marked as A2, dated today, and the floor plan is pre-marked A3, also dated.
Mr. Pergano, just real quickly, A1, that was just one sheet, I just want to make sure that the records...
It's just one sheet. It's a colorized rendering of what was submitted to the board.
Yeah, the A2, the rendering, is really a reduced version of the drawing that was submitted in your packet. Our printer doesn't do beyond 24 by 36. Oh, our printer won't do beyond 24 by 36 size, so we reduced it so we could colorize it.
And we will submit electronic versions to the board as part of compliance.
I'll start with just some general comments. You've already heard that the footprint of the building stayed exactly the same. All that we really did, when we got the new client onboard, the market had changed the previous units, which were 40-foot wide, created some oversized units, and they just didn't have the need for it. It also was a conventionally framed building. This one went to a pre-engineered structure, which allowed us to put the columns closer together, clear-span the building, and then use those columns as the demising walls so we can get the smaller units. The units are averaging about 24 feet on center. At the, I guess it would be the east end of the building, which is the part that faces Royce Field Road, we have a 75-foot depth, and at the back of the L, we have an 80-foot depth. So we do have two different-sized units. But, I'm sorry, let me get my numbers to make sure I don't give you the wrong idea. There's the smaller units, there's 24 of them, they're approximately 17,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 18,000 square feet, with the exception of the end unit facing Royce Field, because that's where we have the utility rooms. We have an electric room, and we have a sprinkler room, and so that takes away a little bit of the square footage. The larger units at the back half of the L are roughly 2200 square feet, so that's more of a market base that we need right now. The other major difference in terms of the building and the elevations themselves is that the materials change. When it was a conventionally framed building, we were using concrete block masonry up to a 10-to-12-foot mark, and then using metal siding up above that. When we got rid of the conventional framing and went straightforward to a pre-engineered building, we decided to use the manufactured materials, which gave us metal siding from the finished floor up to the eve line, and allowed us to change colors so that we can get a little bit of interest in the building, because we didn't want just something big and blank. We have three colors on the building. The roof is the lighter color, it's a tanish color, and then we have a slightly darker tan on the base and body of the building, and then we use red accent panels to kind of highlight it and break up the length of the building. Now, obviously, from Royce Field, we've got the short end, you're really not seeing it, but once you get in-tied, it sort of breaks it up a little bit, makes it easier for identifying the people. If you've got a space, there'll be numbers on the buildings, of course, and you'll be able to see it. We've also taken the overhead doors and given them a color, it's this manufacturer's standard light tan, again, created a little bit of a rhythm, and then at the man doors, the actual entrances into these units, we've highlighted them with some masonry accents, so that when you're walking in, you're not going into a metal building, you're walking into a nice building with doors and stone and a window right next door to it. The building did grow in height a little bit. We were at, I think, 18-foot eaves in the original building, and now we are up to 24-foot eaves. That gives the individual user inside the building a little bit more height, gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of high pile storage, which is something that we are always cognizant of because of the tenant, and also building, so we want to make sure we can leave. I'll go over to A3, and A3 is really the big floor plan, obviously, because of the length, we had to break it up. So we have a partial floor plan, it has one long leg, and then the L up above. In the upper right-hand corner of A3 are enlarged plans. The end unit is very typical, these are the two, the sprinkler room and the electric room, and then you'll see that there's an office, a little storage room with a kitchen sink, and a bathroom, and then a slop sink. This will be the typical configuration for all of the office spaces in the units as they're first going in. Obviously, we don't know who the tenants are going to be, some of them may want to make some modifications, but that's probably what it's going to look like. And that's typical for the type, for this type of construction. We do a lot of them in town and in other small industrial parks here, and that's what seems to sell and rent and lease the best.
Okay.
I'm not sure there's any else you need to know about the little industrial building.
I have one question, Mr. Sermonara. So these are all one-floor storage facilities, there's no second-floor lofts or anything like that?
No, they'll all be single-story buildings, single-story occupants, yes, sir.
Any additional comments, questions? Open up to the public, if anyone would like to question this witness's testimony. No takers. Thank you.
I have no further questions. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, if I might summarize a bit.
Sure.
There is one variance for the minimum lot width. There are, I think, two conditions, potentially. One is that they would revisit the parking to see if there's an opportunity for banked parking, which would be submitted to my department and to the board engineer for approval. The other is to address any stormwater issues that the environmental commission has brought to our attention. Counselor.
We're also going to approve, would also approve the C-bulk variance as previously approved, as well as the few waivers requested on the record. However, we will still seek outside agency approval, as testified to during the hearing from the, what was it, from the DR, the DRCC and the soil conservation, as well as all comments by the township professionals and their reports and during, throughout the hearing this evening, that have been agreed to on the record, and then any other comments as well by any of the board members that were agreed to by the applicant. So all those as well will go into the resolution.
Thank you. I guess I will now entertain a motion to approve this application as, with the conditions as outlined by counselor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, one last, any comments from the dais? Please, yep, sorry.
So we're in.
Is there any testimony you give tonight, is it true, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
And now, just, I guess you have to pick out a lot of the states by any way.
Ron Pagano, P-A-G-A-N-O. I have one problem, guys, the parking. Mr. Falk is right, your parking is light, and I don't want a problem with tenants. That's a major, you know, trying to rinse space out... trying to rent space out, and you have problems even if you rented it out, and all of a sudden later on, tenants are arguing over parking, then the word is out. You have a problem with parking, and you have a financial problem. I really think it's the right amount of parking. It was approved that way before. I'm not looking to put any storage there that's not permitted. I just know that I don't want a problem with parking. That's one detriment that'll really torpedo a job. I've put a lot of thought into this, as you can see, and that's really what I have to say. I can't live with that condition.
Didn't we approve 88? Didn't we approve what?
88 approved, yeah.
It's just that there would be a period of banking for that, for perhaps a small section of parking in the corner, so you'd be able to build it. But again, you know, the idea is to do it in phases.
As long as I don't need permission to do it.
No, you wouldn't. You'd basically build it as needed, so if at some point it does turn out that you do in fact need all 88 spaces, you would build them.
I'm not looking for a problem. I really am. You know, life is what it is, and headaches are one of the, as least amount as possible. And I don't want to upset tenants or anybody else with a problem. I see it happen on a lot of places. I get tenants from places that have those problems. I don't want it to happen here. I know better.
Okay.
Any questions?
Counselors, the resolution, as you described, still valid?
I would think it's be still valid.
Okay. I just want to make sure because...
Just as I think explained, that he still has, he has the approval for the 88 based on the resolution that's before the board, or the motion that's before the board. So he'd had that ability. Doesn't preclude him.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because he said he wasn't going to comply. So I just want to make sure that we are clear. This resolution's for 88, and everyone's on board with it. Okay.
We understand, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I believe we have a motion and a second. One more crack at comments, and no more. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Serramita?
Yes.
Mr. Emmick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor LaPani?
Yes.
Mike Shadrullian?
Yes.
Chris Rock?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we could discuss the upcoming schedule, or lack thereof.
Hey, guys. Hold on. Hey, guys. We got it. David, just kind of say the schedule.
The next scheduled meeting would have been a business meeting on March 26. There's no business. There are no, there's nothing scheduled through April, April 2nd, 9th, and the 23rd, and by knowledge, there are no ordinances coming through in that time period. So I mean, ostensibly, well, certainly you could cancel the March 26 business meeting, as you often do. It's up to you if you want to cancel the April meetings now, or allow the chairman the authority to cancel them at his discretion, or just cancel them now. It's up to you guys.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to cancel the March 26 meeting, and then giving the chairman responsibility to decide whether or not to have any of the April meetings?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Serramita?
Yes.
Mr. Emmick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor LaPani?
Yes.
Mike Shadrullian?
Yes.
Chris Rock?
Yes. So last order of business is a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.